Of a day, we are reconvening the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. It is now 2:57 PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, and on Monday, September 13th, 2021. A notice was published in Guam Daily Post on those same days. We are now going to hear Bill Number 143-36 LS, introduced by Senator Frank Blas Jr. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with Senator Blas, and also Senator Telo Titikwe, Senator Antony Ada, and Senator Joanne Brown. With that being said, I'd like to invite Senator Blas to please introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Bill 143-36 LS, an act to amend subsection 2515 of Chapter 25 Title IX Guam Code annotated and subsection 2520 of Chapter 25 Title IX Guam Code annotated to include other circumstances by which an individual can be found guilty of first or second degree criminal sexual conduct. What this bill provides is basically, in addition to the existing statutes with regards to first and second degree criminal sexual conduct, that adds a section now that provides that if the actor, if the perpetrator of the crime is a teacher, substitute teacher, administrator of the public school, non-public school or school district in which the victim is enrolled, or the actor is an employee or contractual service provider of the public school, non-public school or school district in which the victim, first victim person is enrolled, or the actor is a volunteer who is not a student in any public school or non-public school, or the actor is an employee of the local government or of a local unit of government of Guam, or of the United States assigned to provide any service to that public school, non-public school or school district, and the actor uses his or her employee contractual or volunteer status to gain access to or establish a relationship with the victim. So this provides a gap there. In statute, there was a gap or there was an area that if the individual was in some power of authority, in this case, in the area of education, that and uses that, that, that position and that authority to be able to victimize or, you know, cause victim onto, into an individual, that would cause that, that the criminal sexual act that was caused can be not classified as a first, and then it's also a secondary, secondary degree felony with regard to this. And again, it goes back to, you know, basically trying to fill those gaps, those areas that, you know, the law was not as concise or precise in being able to properly charge these individuals if they were in these capacities and took advantage of these capacities, these roles to be able to victimize, to, to, to fall prey on, on, on their victims. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I look forward to the testimony that was going to be provided, as well as any of the questions that any of my colleagues may have with regards to this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. May I ask if there's any testimony on this bill from the police department?
I have not received any as of this time yet.
All right, thank you. I'd like to now invite the Deputy Attorney General Stephanie Manjola to present testimony.
Ladies and gentlemen, Speaker, for the record, I'm Deputy Attorney General Stephanie Manjola, the General Counsel for the Office of the Attorney General. Here with me today from our office is Assistant Attorney General Christine Tenorio, our senior prosecutor, one of our senior prosecutors in our Prosecution Division and head of our Sex Crimes Unit. We are here today in support, again, of Bill 143 and have written testimony that has been submitted to your office. In short, as Senator Blas mentioned, the bill is aimed at filling a gap, and if we would connect it to 142, that filled the gap for 15 and 16-year-olds with, in the area of bringing felony charges. This bill sort of fills the gap in recognizing that teachers and other school officials are in positions of authority by nature of their job in caring for our children. I want to venture to say this might be a little bit more similar, but, I mean, a little bit more simple. We also have proposed amendments for this, and I will ask, but I think I know the answer. If you would like me to read the testimony into the record or jump into discussion, yes, okay.
Because we just received it now, if you could read it onto the record, it would be helpful.
No problem. I always say for this short straw, but I'm never sure if I'll get out of that since I have yet to attain five feet in my life. So four foot, ten and a half always gets to me. Okay, here we go. Hafadae, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony in support of Bill Number 143-36 LS. As mentioned in our testimony on Bill 142-36, over 100 criminal sexual conduct cases are referred to our office each year, some of which involve children as young as four years old, and most of which involve a parent, other relative, household member, or authoritative figure as the actor. We are supportive of legislative efforts aimed at curbing this from this behavior, including the proposal of this bill to criminalize what is sometimes referred to generally as "educator sexual misconduct." Educator sexual misconduct statutes recognize that teachers, school administrators, and other staff in the school setting holds positions of trust by the community and positions of authority over students. And even in cases where a student has attained the age of consent, the genuine ability to consent is impaired by this authority. Thirty-nine states and the District of Columbia have criminalized educator sexual misconduct in varying degrees. And there's a long footnote I'll skip over, but for your reference, lists the different ways different states handled this situation. In Guam, the specific act of using authority to coerce a child into submitting to acts of sexual penetration and sexual contact is criminalized as first and second degree CSC, both of which are first-degree felonies. However, the elements of authority in the law are applicable to cases involving 15 and 16-year-olds and are written more broadly. First, the actor is, is in a position of authority over the victim, and the actor used this authority to coerce the victim into submission. Amending the law to specify that teachers, administrators, and other school staff can be criminally liable for unlawful sexual conduct with children provides more clarity by recognizing that these individuals hold positions of authority over student victims by virtue of their position. To note, Guam's first and second degree CSC laws were enacted in 1979 and modeled after Michigan statute. In 2002, Michigan adopted its version of educator sexual misconduct laws. Arguments by proponents of the measure included that parents need to have trust in those who are entrusted with the education of their children. Children should be able to attend school without fear of being lured into a relationship with a teacher or school administrator. In the case of consensual sex, it is difficult to prove that the teacher or administrator used the power inherent in his or her position to force that relationship. And even though the age of consent is 16 years old, it is inappropriate that teachers or administrators engage in liaisons with students. Opponents argued that 15 years to life was too harsh a punishment, that the law disregarded the age of consent, and that the proposed exception for married individuals would lead to the absurd result of two individuals being subject to criminal penalties for sexual behavior during courtship, but not during wedlock. We anticipate similar concerns may be raised in the deliberation of this measure, and our office does not take a precision, position on the various policy positions involved. We do, however, support the adoption of an educator sexual misconduct law and recommend more simplified language to replace both subsections eight and nine as proposed as follows. The actor is, sorry, open quote, subsection eight, "The actor is employed by assigned-to-or-non-student volunteers at the school in which the victim is enrolled. Employment, assignment, or non-student volunteer status may be established by direct employment or by contract." This language is intended to capture all categories of schools, public charter, private, et cetera, and all categories of authoritative positions within the school setting, teachers, substitute teachers, coaches, contractor workers, volunteers, et cetera, should that be the legislature's intent. Lastly, we raise fair consideration to public policy issues also implicated by this proposal. First, whether this law will apply regardless of whether a victim has attained the age of consent. And second, whether our community college and university settings will be considered "school settings" for the purposes of this law. Again, we thank you for this opportunity and for your consideration. Since our mentee Stephanie Manjola, General Counsel, Deputy Attorney General. Thank you. So if I may summarize that, it's just similar to the last bill, adding 15 and 16 being sufficient enough to bring a charge. This bill will add the position that the defendant holds as sufficient enough to bring a charge without anything more. If they're already a teacher, already a coach, already a school administrator. Attorney Morrison, I hope I'm not jumping the gun, but opponents would say the law already allows this. Yes, it does, but it would require that we show what position that person holds and that position is, that position of authority is a position of authority over that specific victim and that that person used that position of authority to coerce the victim into the particular act. What the bill proposes and what we do support, in whichever way the legislature does decide to craft it within the different policy considerations and various forms, is that we recognize that these positions, by virtue of their jobs, are positions of authority and would be sufficient enough to sustain a charge where a teacher, administrator, or the like is involved when the victim is a student in the same place. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Deputy Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General Tenorio. Did you have anything to add to that right now?
Yes, at this point, I just, Dagman Yola covered everything, but I just did want to highlight that I know that the question is going to be, why can't we use the existing law on force or coercion or using your authority to cause some, a victim to submit? Why is that not sufficient? If you analyze Guam Supreme Court case law, those elements are very difficult to meet. And going through the history of those types of cases at the AG's office, we, we cannot meet those elements. It sounds simple, but it's not. And so this bill would actually protect the students in, without making it so difficult. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Director Morrison, would you like to submit testimony?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to Deputy Attorney General Manjola. She didn't jump the gun. She, these are some of my arguments. And the first argument being that this, this does already exist in law, that it's a 15 to year, 15 to life offense for an actor to use his position of authority over a victim to coerce the victim to submit. So I think that's really the evil that the legislation is proposing to deal with, that these are instances where somebody uses their position to force someone into consenting. I believe that the law as drafted here casts too wide of a net, and it's going to be a matter of time before somebody gets caught into this web that wasn't the intended fish. For, for instance, paragraph eight says, "The actor is a teacher, substitute teacher, or administer of a public school, non-public school, or school district in which the victim is enrolled." So not only does this not require that the person use their authority over the victim to gain their consent, it doesn't even require that the actor come in contact with the victim as, as written. This could be a 21-year-old who just finished school and is substitute teaching just within the same school district of an 18-year-old who is a, is a family friend that he's dating. Now, I certainly think that's a realistic possibility of the sort of person that could get caught up in this. Additionally, paragraph nine deals with people that, again, don't necessarily have to have contact with the person or coerce them into giving consent, but it's just even a volunteer or contractual worker at a school. So again, I think this would set up a scenario where someone is there doing grounds maintenance at the school, and there's no age requirement here. And as drafted, we're concerned that this could include some of the higher educational institutions on Guam as well. So this could be someone regardless of age who meets somebody that they wouldn't have otherwise met because they're doing some contractual work around the school. And nothing more seems to be required than that, just that they gained access to the victim as defined because they were doing that work rather than trying to coerce the person. So that's our position relative to this legislation, that it casts far too wide of a net and is just going to have terrible results. These, these are, these are basically the most serious crimes that we have on Guam. These carry 15 to life or five to 20 for second offenders in the second degree realm. So these, these aren't the type of bills that we were discussing before. We're, we're talking about, should it be a felony or misdemeanor? These are very serious crimes. Also, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Morrison. Senator Blas, would you like to begin with a question?
Thank you very much for all that I've been able to testify. I think some of my questions could be directed to Deputy Director Morrison here. I appreciate that you are to, just, this disappears to me. However, can you please, would you, would you agree that even if this were to be used, there's still that element that the individual, because you, you said that the school district, but not necessarily in the same place. How is that necessary? The case, in, in, in the case of first or second degree criminal sexual conduct, where in fact does we require some contact?
Well, it requires some contact for, for the sexual act. I agree with that. I mean, it doesn't require that they even know each other in the classroom or on the sports team or that sort of thing. And as drafted, it doesn't seem to require that. It seems like the, the crime could be satisfied if this person was just there in the same school district and was not in a position of authority to directly supervise the victim in the case. So in that instance, there'd be no indication that that person's position is what caused the consent. And it's certainly not the person's age, because this doesn't require age. So there's no concern that they're at a more vulnerable age based on the relationship here.
And admittedly so, I didn't, I didn't put in as far as age requirements and everything, because first off, it's basically a, my, from my position in basically drafting this bill, it's from a position of authority or perceived position of authority. When an individual walks into a, into a facility, and it is, it could be commonly known that that individual does work there. Okay, and that there is, remember, this is first and second degree criminal sexual conduct offenses and stuff. So basically, there has to have been some type of criminal sexual contact. Okay, how that individual, and if that, if that would be, to be the case, if it was in, in a school facility or outside of a school facility, but it was known that that individual had some position of authority in using that position of authority or the inference of, the assumption of the use of that position of authority, I just don't want that, that person to be able to use that kind of influence or to, or to have that kind of influence to be able to, to, to commit the offense. And so I recognize, and I see some, some, however, I have taken my position in the bill is that first off with regard to, and, and it goes back to, 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 you know, Dag's Manjola's concern as far as policy. If the policy is to be said whether or not this is just going to go to just, you know, high schools and into colleges. If you're a teacher and that's a student, and you take advantage of that position, then yes. Okay, that's why there is no age. And the, the policy is that I hope to sell in this, from this, from this legislature, is that any conduct, any criminal sexual conduct that was conducted is, and in this case, in the guise of the authority that you have over that individual, remember what the age is, it could be charged as such. So I appreciate that, okay? With that, Madam Speaker, I'll go ahead and hold off and have my colleagues, my other colleagues be, be able to provide their questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Ada?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't have any questions at this time. I'll continue to listen. Thank you.
Senator Titikwe?
None at this time, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the comments and input that's been provided, but I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask just a couple of questions. So first of all, so Deputy Attorney General, in your testimony, when you described that under the current law right now, the elements are the actor is a position of authority over the victim. I see that in, oh, no, I don't see that one. And I see the actor used this authority to coerce the victim into submission. That's in part, except part 4B of this same statute?
That's in both first and second degree subsection A2. But if we're looking at the bill, it would be on page one, lines 11 through 13. And that's under the first degree criminal sexual conduct section. And then again, on page three, lines 22 to 23, under the second degree criminal sexual conduct definition. So, well, sorry, yes, that's where it exists in the current law.
All right, thanks. And then when you made your recommendation to change subsections eight and nine to this new subsection eight, this is for both sections one and two of the bill?
Correct, yes.
All right. So if I'm understanding this correctly, right now, you have to prove these two elements. They're difficult to prove according to the testimony. It's difficult to prove the actor's in a position of authority over the victim, difficult to prove the actor used this authority to coerce the victim into submission. And so if we enacted this bill, we would pretty much say, say, if you are in one of these positions, as you describe, you are, you are kind of a default found to have met these elements, right? That you, that you were in a position of authority, first of all, by statute. Now I need to prove that anymore. And second of all, that if you had sexual penetration with somebody in the school system, that you had used your authority to coerce the victim into submission, right?
Yes, it would, it would be implied by identifying the teacher or whatever the particular position is. So you're recognizing through implication that there is a position of authority there, but you're, it's completely separate from the use of authority section.
All right. So for the position of authority, is there any other language you might propose from any other jurisdiction that kind of addresses the concerns of, you know, the, the, yes? Because, yeah, can we narrow it down a little bit?
Actually, well, um, I was waiting for a chance to chime in, actually, because even Attorney Tenorio and I are going back and forth on this. Because to a certain extent, we do agree with Attorney Morrison about how it's a bit broad. So the language that we propose kind of narrows it into the same, that the, that the actor and the victim would be in the same setting. But to answer your question, Speaker, yes, there are different versions and different jurisdictions that we can share with you. And to address what Attorney Morrison was bringing up, I think it gets more, the, the danger or the concern is that if there is a 19-year-old person cutting grass at Okadu High School, because that's part of their job, they are then subjecting themselves to criminal activity if they are in a relationship with a 17-year-old enrolled at GCC because they have a late birthday and they're older, you know, something, something like that. It's just, it was a bit more broad. But I, I think we are all on the same page, getting, sort of getting to what I mentioned earlier, that this one is a bit, a little bit more simple because we can all agree that people in these special positions of authority should not be abusing that authority in this way. But yes, there is a argument that the language as proposed is, is a bit broad. And this is, this is, our testimony is how we offered to try to narrow that. So you have this sort of same setting, and you have that connection between the actor and the, and the victim to narrow the context. But we can certainly share with you language in other jurisdictions for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Because, yeah, I, I appreciate the intent. And I, I wouldn't mind saying they were in positions of authority. However, you know, that, yeah, yeah, I'm trying to think of the very likely scenario on Guam where they've met prior to that and established a relationship prior to, you know, contract work or some other work. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, but.
If I may also add, not to discount the bill at all, Senator Blas, AG Tenorio and I were also going back and forth. Like we mentioned, the Guam law was taken from Michigan, and so was this. This was Michigan's language. So it makes sense to, to follow it. That's where this portion of our Guam Code originated. But maybe just to revise it a bit, because there's, there may be confusion over, well, is it the district? Because in some legal settings, all of Guam is one district versus in the states, there's multiple ones. Or is it strictly DOE's districting or whatever another scenario might be? But that's, thank you.
Maybe you can check Michigan then and see some of the outcomes if they're, they are, you know, controversial outcomes. But what about this then? So you raised two policy considerations, not necessarily clear in this bill, right? Whether this law will apply regardless of whether a victim has attained the age of consent. If a victim has not attained the age of consent, I think there's no harm in passing this bill because they're, they cannot consent to any, any person doing that to them in any capacity. Isn't that right? I mean, they don't, we don't even need this. We don't need that there, I guess it's just to add what penalties? If they're in this position of authority? I see.
May I respond to that? Yeah. Scenario, yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So to reflect what Dagman Yola said, the exact language is the exact language from Michigan. And there was a question as to why we needed both subsections. And the reason why in Michigan, they added the subsection that has the contractor workers is because, to simply say, teacher, substitute teacher, and the like won't include coaches, it won't include teachers' aides, it won't include people, yeah, or even a volunteer coach. So you're not necessarily employed, but you're volunteering to coach the high school basketball team. You would be liable under this statute. So the, I, the language was, you know, obviously it's a state, so that's why the, all the extraneous language was in there. But we do want to make very clear who it is applying to as far as beyond just you're a traditional teacher. The other thing was, oh, there was a question because if, if the intent was to, if it's teachers just at that school where the, where there's a student, or what if you have a visiting teacher, like a visiting substitute teacher from one high school to another? Should that be protected too? So under the current language of the law, they are protected. Everybody's protected because, because the whole point is to bar all teacher-student relationships. As far as the age of consent, because I actually went and studied all the jurisdictions that have done this, and again, by anecdotal evidence, when I went to the conference and they, there was a question as to who here comes from a state who has not criminalized this conduct, and I was the only one that raised my hand out of all the jurisdictions. Because I want to say there's about 38 states that have passed some type of bill. The issue when it comes to age of consent is because as the, where the age of consent comes in is as the bill is written, this would actually include every college student and their professor. And so there was, there's a lot, there was a lot of discussion in the, in the different states as to if those, those are the entities that you, that people want to include. But I do have to say this, I'm sure everyone knows that on Guam, we also have that problem in our college and university setting. And right now, all of that is only chargeable as a. And right now, all of that is only chargeable as a third-degree felony or a misdemeanor, depending on the contact. So let's say if a professor just touches, just touches a student, it's only a misdemeanor. So that's why the states who have done this, including Michigan, have done this to make a higher penalty or institute a higher penalty for those people who are in positions of authority. The other thing is that the Guam Supreme Court has actually stated, well, the legislature doesn't say teacher and student are an actual position of authority under the authority to coerce someone to submit. And without that language, the prosecutor is going to go, has to prove that and have to prove that you use that authority to coerce the person to submit. So I do want to say though, I researched this and this language passed constitutional muster as far as can the legislature prohibit to a person who's the age of consent from engaging in a relationship with their professor? Let's say a nineteen-year-old and a university student. And the states so far have all agreed that the state has a right to regulate that conduct for the protection of the children. And on Guam, I do want to add the reason why, when we talk about consent, the issue is Guam's consent laws are harsh. We have the harshest consent laws in the nation, really. And so what this bill does is cover this type of situation. Let's say it's a student and she keeps rebuffing her professor or his or her professor, his or her teacher. And you keep saying, no, I, you know, declined at the advances. When you finally say yes, because this teacher keeps pursuing you and you're just afraid at that point, or not even say yes, but just kind of let it occur, because you're in that position where you're scared of them, because they, they can hold your great hostage or something like that. This bill would make it easier to prove, you know, that they, you know, that they were forced to submit because of the nature of the relationship, not because you actually coerced them to submit on that particular day. So that's where the age of consent comes in. And that was what Dag Mendiola was referring to as far as whether that's going to be an issue. If I also may just add, Speaker, to answer the first question about under age of consent, then yes, this, this part wouldn't apply. And sir, sorry, not that this part wouldn't apply, but without this, or this law could go forward and still, I think your question was, could this law go forward aside from those who have reached age of consent, which is basically sixteen, and operate? Because the fifteen-year-olds and below don't have the opportunity to, ability to consent. And that answer is yes. And the different jurisdictions, which we can share that with you also, different jurisdictions do handle it differently. Some acknowledge the age of consent and some do not. And the ones that do not acknowledge age of consent do so through taking the policy position that even though there is this construct of age of consent recognized by the law, this is a special setting. The education setting is a special setting. So the age of that consent is, I guess, not genuine or impaired when you're in this relationship.
Right. Thank you very much for that explanation. And may I ask you, Christine, can you just tell us again? I mean, the Deputy Attorney General introduced you, but tell me again your position at the AG's office. I know you're the head prosecutor for, I believe, criminal sexual conduct cases, but can you state it formally for me one more time?
Yes, Madam Speaker. So I'm actually the head of the sex crimes unit within the prosecution division. So as far as the role, what I do is actually analyze all the statutes and all the charging decisions come through me. And it's, and we have to make charging decisions based on legally what we can prove under Supreme Court case law, under Michigan case, under Minnesota case law, so that we, we, the convictions get upheld on appeal. And then also, we know what, my job is to know and understand what types of cases on Guam are falling through the cracks as far as, because there's no legal remedy for those cases or if there's no statute that covers the conduct.
All right. So I want to ask you, in your experience, and how long have you been doing that?
I've been the head of sex crimes for five years. I've been a prosecutor for almost ten, head of sex crimes for five.
Thank you. And thank you for your service in that regard. I know that takes a toll and it's very tough. So I want to thank you for that. But in your experience, then, you know, how much do you think we need this bill to pass on Guam in particular, right? Never mind what all the other states are doing, but do we need this? Do you feel there is a need based on your experience?
So I do, and I think that this is important for us to understand that whether or not cases pass through my desk at this office, because people have reported, that we also need to think about the acts that are unreported. And so I think the bill is necessary, because this is kind of a proactive stance to protect the students. Because I think that what, well, I mean, I know what's happening, because I also work with the Healing Hearts Rape Crisis Center, and not all of their rape cases come to me, but we all collaborate. Because I also sit on the sexual assault response team in collaboration with other agencies. So we know that there are many criminal sexual conduct cases that are not being reported. In the school setting, we think that there's a lot of students not reporting, because they think they consented, you know what I mean? Like they think that because they didn't say no to their teacher or to a teacher's aide or some, some, or a coach, that they cannot report it and that therefore it cannot be prosecuted. So that, I think, is where this bill would further protect and, you know, the legislature would be taking a proactive measure to ensure and send a message to all students that they can come forward. And then also, I have talked to people in the university setting, same thing. The same thing's happening there. Even if we've only prosecuted maybe a few of those lately, it's actually a rampant issue and they, it just needs to be addressed.
All right. Do you think we need to accommodate where they may be a legitimate, really, I don't know what's a word legitimate, but where there may be a consensual relationship then? And for example, in the university setting?
So I think that's always, so, so of course, and again, this is where there's also prosecutorial discretion around here, because clearly, if we come across a case and it was truly consensual, or truly consensual without reference to this bill, for example, like the example you had been talking about earlier, or Dag Mendiola had been talking about earlier, is if the relationship started before and then continued into the setting, that is where prosecutorial discretion will come in. And then there's a choice whether or not to charge that. I do want to say though, that I've actually studied all the jurisdictions that have done it. And there's different ways to achieve this if the legislators think that it's too far-reaching. And Dag Mendiola, it's actually going to be in our further written testimony, I believe. But some states qualify it within age or by school. So some states say this statute will only apply to elementary, middle, and high school students, regardless of age. Other states say, no, we're going to go all the way up to the university level, but the victim has to be under the age of twenty-one. Some states do that, or under the age of twenty. And under, so the jurisdictions that do it have done it under the age of twenty-one, twenty, nineteen, and eighteen. So there are different ways to still address the issue without, you know, casting the wide net that Mr. Morrison is concerned about. And it is, I could see that's a valid concern. We're not trying to criminalize people who are in truly consensual relationships. It's just consent is a construct that the Guam law doesn't, it's not really well-defined.
All right, thank you. Deputy Morrison, did you have anything you wanted to add based on this discussion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I didn't have, I didn't really have anything else. It sounds like everyone's in agreement that this is a law that should be looked at and some changes are necessary. I think the takeaway points from my office is that we just don't want us, we don't want to have a legal fiction created. We want it to be criminal when a teacher coerces a student into consenting or someone in a position of authority coerces someone into consenting into a relationship or into sex. I don't think anybody could possibly be against that. But again, I believe this law would have consequences that are just too far-reaching. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. And Senator Blas, if you'd like to close on the bill?
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all who testified. And, you know, I listened intently to the comment. I will admit, okay, you know, first off, coming from law enforcement and hearing what a police officer has to sit here and listen to all the attorneys fighting about their interpretation of the law, you, Madam Speaker, included, okay? You know, with me, it's just, let's go out and arrest them. You guys are basically, you know, here's a technical point. We'll figure that out later. But, you know, there are some legitimate concerns and some legitimate reasons. I still can hold my stance with regards to my conservative, basically stance on how the bill should be represented in the policy that this should surround this bill. However, I recognize that this is a body, this is a democratic body, and these are things that, you know, we need to discuss. At the end of the day, what we want is we want piece of legislation, we want a law that not only has the teeth, but it basically has the, enough of the power to be able to hang on and to pass muster. You know, I am, I have no basically concern or objection. I think that this is probably one of those, if not ready for, to be put on the floor for deliberation and for consideration by the body to have a further discussion on this through a roundtable, so that we can, we can, you know, resolve some of those concerns. I know, Madam Speaker, just based on your conversation, that there may be concerns about the policy of the, of where we're to go with this thing. At the end of the day, what we want to make sure is that no teacher in no capacity can victimize or can prey on any student, no matter what the age. And get away with that or seem to, you know, if I just do this, that's the only punishment I want to get. I, when you're in a position of authority and you're going to go after, you know, victims in that manner, you know, I would rather, you know, give them the maximum time possible. But that's me. So with that matter, Speaker, I want to thank you for having the opportunity, having this bill, this public hearing. And I want to thank those who have testified and thank my colleagues as well for participating in this discussion. And I look to you. I know that there are some suggestions by the Attorney Generals that seem to have also addressed some of the concerns of Mr. Morrison. Mr. Morrison, as you can probably see, okay, I've given you the opportunity to go ahead and retort some of the things, and that's for good cause, okay? This is so we can, at the end of the day, we can make a bill that everybody is comfortable. I understand your position as a defense attorney sometime, you know, I'm from the other side, okay? I'm used to fighting against you guys, so don't worry about it. Okay?
It's a pleasure to be here.
All right, buddy. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. And I look forward to working with you in the committee and putting together some of the suggestions from the Attorney General's office as to how we can this, but, you know, I'm looking at this language and I prefer the one that Stephanie just had. Okay, it was more concise. So I prefer that one too as well. So I'm looking to working with you, committee, and being able to do that. Okay? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. And again, if I, I really want to thank the representatives from the Attorney General's office, those from the public defender. We are relying on you both to do your jobs diligently and to your utmost, you know, extent to, to advocate for your, you know, clients, advocate for justice. And we need all aspects of this justice system to, to do that. And so your testimony here today, I think, is, it's so very helpful, because we do not want to be a legislature that is changing criminal laws in, you know, in the dark, without your advice and without your experience to, to guide us, really. And so I want to thank you for that. And thank you for your hard work in these areas. I know they're, they're not easy areas to, to, you know, have a career in. So I want to thank you for that. And with that being said, and there are no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill 143-36 LS duly heard. We will continue to accept testimony for ten days. It is now three forty-one, and we will adjourn the hearing on Bill 143-36 and take just a one-minute recess and convene for Bill number 144-36. Thank you again. Thank you.